Gullis Meeting to Order, June 3, 2021 Board of Commissioners Regular Session. In accordance with Section 3 of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, the clerk will note for the record, this meeting is being conducted remotely via Zoom pursuant to a local declaration of emergency adopted by the Board of Commissioners on March 18, 2020 and extended on October 15, 2020. All members are attending remotely and with video activated. During the roll call, each member will indicate if they are currently located in Calhoun County, or if not, the county, city, village, township, and state from which they are attending this meeting remotely. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Commissioner Derek King.
Present. Calhoun County, yep.
Mr. Tommy Miller.
Present, Marango Township.
Mr. Gary Tompkins.
Present from Homer Township.
And you mentioned Commissioner Kathy Sue that he will be coming in.
Yep, should be joining us shortly.
Commissioner Rachel Hatcher.
Present, Battle Creek, Michigan.
Commissioner Jake Smith.
Present, Battle Creek.
Commissioner Steve Frisby.
Present in Battle Creek tonight.
We have four.
After a moment of silence, Commissioner Smith will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God, liberty, and justice for all.
Liberty, justice for all.
Can I have a motion to approve the June 3, 2021 Board of Commissioners Regular Session Agenda as presented?
So move Miller.
Support Hatcher.
Miller and Hatcher, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner King.
You're muted.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Kathy Sue, it's present, Commissioner Hatcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Frisby.
Yes.
Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners' May 20, 2021 Regular Session as presented?
So move Tompkins.
Support Smith.
Tompkins and Smith. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Frisby.
Yes.
Commissioner King.
Yes.
We have six, yes.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is Citizens Time. During Citizens Time, the Board Chair shall recognize any person wishing to address the Board. A person recognized by the Chair shall call in and state his or her name and community of residence. A person may address the Board only once on the same matter during each period set aside for Citizens Time on the agenda and only on matters that are relevant to county government. The Chair shall control the length of each time a person shall be allowed to speak, which shall not exceed three minutes and shall not allow negative personal comments. Please meet your TV or computer when calling in as the background sound will generate feedback. Please note there's an approximately 30-second delay between the live meeting and the YouTube feed. Is there anyone who would like to address their commissioners? Is there anyone who would like to address their commissioners? Is there anyone that would like to address their commissioners? Patrick, anybody in the queue? All right, I see your message, thank you. We'll move along. Are there any elected or appointed county officials who'd like to comment? A couple of appointed, anybody? All right, we'll move on. Special order business, we have none, and consent agenda, we have two items. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So move more.
Support Hatcher.
Miller and Hatcher, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Not here, Commissioner Hatcher.
Yes, please.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Frisby.
Yes.
Commissioner King.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
We have six, yes.
Motion carries. Any special committee workshop or board reports?
Oh, I got something.
Go ahead, Commissioner Miller.
We met last night with, uh...
Mrs. Tom. The Fairbo...
CCIS Board, Matt, and we got a mower for the CCIS fairgrounds, which nips like quite a bit, the Battle Creek Foundation has been working on this quite a bit. So really appreciate that. A couple meetings, we've gotten a lot of new staff. We had a lot of staff changes. Plan still having a fair, and this weekend we're having a drive-through fair food. If you want Friday, Saturday, and I believe it's Sunday, too. They're gonna have all the fair vendors, the food vendors, set up all weekend, so come on up if you wanna help in here.
Cool, just what I need. Anybody else? All right.
Chair, just real quick.
Go ahead, sir.
Sorry, real quick, it looks like there was somebody that wanted to talk on the YouTube feed.
Yeah, we're gonna go, we're gonna go back to them as soon as we're done with this. The 911 Hiring Committee met again this morning, and we laid out our timelines, a very aggressive timeline. They have a new person in place early September, so we'll see what happens. It's gonna be tight. We'll go back, do we have somebody in the queue, Patrick? Patrick?
I can help, so we do have someone who has said that they have tried calling in, and what we've done is just checked with them to make sure that they have the information, and I've also given them my email address, so we'll get them on the Citizens Time at the end of the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for solving that, Lucy and Patrick. Yeah, we have no unfinished business, new business, I'll turn it over to Administrator Controller Kelly Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I want to thank all of the commissioners for participating in the Special Board Workshop last Friday on the American Rescue Plan Act funds. So now what, right? We've had, we've had an outline of what the rules are and some discussion and some input from some key stakeholders in the community. Couple of things coming up as far as timeline, tomorrow morning Chair Frisby and I are meeting with the city managers and mayors from all four of our cities, and that discussion will be around the ARPA funds and potential areas to collaborate. I anticipate them being related possibly to housing initiatives, maybe economic development. We're already working on collaborative public transportation, potentially property tax relief for residents, so that conversation will happen tomorrow. And then on a week from Tuesday on June 15, Road Department is hosting a meeting with township supervisors. And I do wanna talk a little bit about that. We haven't developed the agenda yet or exactly the structure that we want to present to the townships. One of the things that we heard this past week through our Corporation Council is there was some misunderstanding that potentially the county was trying to suggest that townships use their ARPA funds inappropriately, and I just want to clarify. So a reminder that the allowable use category for infrastructure is only water, sewer, and broadband. So roads are not allowable under that section. What the county has been talking about is there is the allowable use for calculating revenue losses, and to the extent of your revenue losses, local governments are allowed to provide any governmental services up to that amount. And so that's what we've been talking about. Whatever we calculate as our revenue loss, definitely putting investments into roads that we own are, would be allowable governmental services to provide under that section. So what we thought was, you know, that is a big priority in Calhoun County, just like investments in our other infrastructure. And if we could somehow leverage funds in the same way with townships, so they would have to do the same thing. They would have to calculate their revenue losses and then basically reimburse their general fund and free up other funds to spend, additional funds to spend on roads, if that's an option. I know some of the townships and villages have pretty large sewer and water needs, and they may not have extra funding, so we really just wanted to have a conversation and somehow if we could create a program where we partner and can do more this year, or even over the next four years, you know, with this extra one-time funding, we just thought we should, we should offer that as a good faith effort to do the best we can together to fix roads. So we're hearing there hasn't been a lot of response to the, to the invitation to that meeting. So all of you commissioners that have township supervisors in your district that you can talk to, if you would please encourage them to just attend the meeting. They have, some of them have been in touch with their legal counsel, and they've been advised the same thing, that the way that you can invest in roads through ARPA funding is through that section where you're calculating lost revenues and you're allowed to provide governmental services. So if you get questions or hear that, just clarify that the county's not, I mean, we fully understand the rules. We're not suggesting anybody do anything inappropriate. We just thought that it would be good, another opportunity to try to collaborate, to make investments that have long-term return on investment. So that's the purpose of that meeting.
Commissioner Scott, may I, one real quick, I apologize. Just wanna make the request, as we talk about townships being involved in that meeting on the 15th, is there a possibility that we could have that meeting via Zoom versus Microsoft Teams? I know last time that we had the meeting, Microsoft Teams did not work for many, many of the townships, specifically mine in particular. If we could change that meeting to a Zoom format, I think that would be more advantageous for those townships to be able to participate, so just wanted to make that comment, thank you.
Yes, I think we've already done that, but for sure it will be Zoom.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. So that happens in July, the US Treasury will finalize their guidance for allowable uses, so we'll have that. I mentioned that actually calculating the revenue losses is a little bit nuanced, and we're meeting with our auditors next week to try to get a couple of questions answered so that we can finalize that calculation. And in the meantime, you know, additional clarification and assistance continues to come out every day. The National Government Finance Officers Association just came out with a revenue loss estimated calculator, so an interactive calculator, we're gonna try that and see if that helps. Tomorrow, the National Association of Counties just set up another webinar to try to, they created a tool that lists all of the other funding sources that came with the $1.9 trillion package in addition to and outside of the county's direct allocation that might impact counties, so that again, we can try to make sure we understand what other funding sources are out there so that we're not duplicating in, you know, so that we can supplement the funds but not try to use our county allocation for something that has a different funding source. So that's happening. I, you know, again, there's no rush to spend the funds. Our treasure has, has them, and our first half of the money invested very nicely, and the interest earned on that is not restricted at all. In fact, that does not have to be reported as, as to what we spend it on to the federal government, so we will be accumulating interest earnings. Having said that, I do anticipate that we will start building a spending plan, a four-year spending plan that can be modified at any time until the end of 2024, just like any budgets, and the spending will all happen within county policies and budget, budgetary controls. We will be engaging the Board of Commissioners Budget Committee as we always do this time of the year, and so they'll have added responsibilities this year to, to help us support and review the ARPA spending plan. And I do anticipate building into this year's budget, even mid-year budget adjustment, any of the projects that really are time-sensitive. So, you know, it's, it's just as important to deploy the funds for their intended purpose in a responsible way as it is to, you know, not rush in and just, you know, spend through them. So there are some projects I do think that will be time-sensitive and will want to build into this year's budget, and then we'll, you know, start to lay out a tentative future years, you know, what we might wanna set aside for categories. We will have to estimate revenue losses each year and refine that each year as we complete the year after December. So that's kind of the timeline, and I think it is okay to continue to tell your constituents that everything is still on the table. It's, it's, we do encourage people to submit through our website on our Contact Us link, and then also feel free to reach out to me directly. I'm trying to coordinate the internal county needs and, you know, like I do with the rest of our budget to recommend to the Board. And then, you know, we're trying to work pretty high level with, just like we had, you know, the head of our countywide Visitors Bureau and, you know, our economic development folks, so they really have a good pulse on the needs countywide. But absolutely, you know, feel free to, to say that we're, you know, we'll continue to consider spending needs and potential investments throughout the next three years. And again, we'll be adjusting those plans, but I don't want you to think that we're just gonna have conversations till the end of the year and not do anything, because I do think we'll want to deploy some of those funds. The mid-year budget adjustment typically comes in August, so we may have some, some spending plans as early as that. Just a brief update on COVID response plans, of course, last week we got new information from the CDC about fully vaccinated individuals not required to wear masks. So the county has adjusted our policies and our signage to match that and to match the new MDHHS order. That really, aside from not requiring our fully vaccinated employees and visitors to wear masks, just also relaxed the capacity limits on indoor gatherings to 50%. So the Board of Commissioners, in consultation with our Board Chair and Vice Chair, we are planning to bring back our commission meetings in person starting in July. So we just have the one meeting in July, July 15. So we'll have our next meeting in June, again via Zoom, hopefully for the final time. And then we're, we're testing out the new voting system, the new audiovisual system in the board chambers, and should be great to get back in person starting in July. We have implemented what the Board approved for an early retirement incentive for our employees, and the, the window to elect retirement this year ended last week at the end of May. We have 38 county employees who are planning to retire this year under that program, so we will see probably more turnover in county staff than, than usual. We also met with our elected officials and department heads today, and many of them are indicating just a real difficulty right now in recruiting people to hire, and this is even before all of their retirements. So what you're hearing on the national news is also impacting us. The extra unemployment is, you know, reducing the number of people available in the workforce, even with the rates of, we have pretty decent rates of pay for our county positions. Sometimes it still works out better financially for, for people to actually not be working. So just keep that in mind. We are again transitioning to more in-person reporting for all county employees throughout the summer with the expectation that after Labor Day, it'll, it'll be back to more of a normal working schedule. And then the courts, of course, are under the separate Supreme Court Administrative Office Guidance for reopening. They're reporting that they're working with our Health Officer in Corporation Council right now on some specific orders to, they're, they're creating basically their own masking, mask policy, face covering policy, and essentially that will mean that in the court areas, the restricted court areas, everyone will be masked, but they will be able to give an exception for their employees in their personal office spaces to not wear masks if they, if they show that they're fully vaccinated. And then they're still hoping to have jury trials come back mid-June and open the courtroom or the courthouse, the Justice Center to the public, basically unlocking the doors and not, no longer screening people at the front and requiring appointments starting right after the Fourth of July. Other thing I want to mention that's not in my written report that will come out is that I was asked by the City of Battle Creek to join their sort of reconstituted airport advisory board. They're, you know, wanting to just promote and advocate for more development in, in the city's airport from an economic development standpoint, and so they created a seat for, specifically for the county administrator or designee on that board. Our first meeting is next week, June 9, so I've agreed to do that, and I'll let you know how that goes. I think that's it, unless any of you have questions.
This is Derek, I have a quick question.
Yes.
So I just, I keep hearing about the, our courts being closed and the surrounding courts being open. Of course, I've never had to go to Kalamazoo County Courthouse or Jackson or Berry or Branch. Is, what, what is the, why, why are we closed when I'm hearing that the other places are open?
Question for the Chief Judge. My understanding was that most courts were still back to, to Phase 1 or even Phase 2. Part of the, the question about like the doors being locked or open is different because of the situation we have where the Justice Center is not just the courthouse, it has other offices in it. But I don't think any other county courts have started jury trials. I just know that there is some individual discretion, so the state has set forth certain gating criteria, so you have to have downward trend in your COVID cases or positivity rate, so those can definitely vary county by county, and they have to get certification from their local health officer that, that they can check that box. And then the judge still, you know, has to feel comfortable that things are safe. So there is some discretion for, for locals to be more restrictive than what the state has said. That's the only thing I can think of, but we can...
Okay, I mean, I understand the jury trials and, you know, having those people in a room and all that. I'm talking about like a lawyer can't walk in or a landlord can't walk in and file a eviction or the, the paperwork for eviction in our county, and they can in other counties. I, I just didn't know if you, what, what that, if you knew more, I don't, I don't think I've had that, that answer.
Yeah, I would, I would wanna get a better answer from Judge Jackanett on that, but that has to do really just with the choice to keep the building or the court operations appointment only and, and require electronic filing or, you know, to make an appointment. But I think it has to do just, you know, with the court's operations and being in that phase and what their local administrative order was, but I would wanna, I would not wanna speak for the courts on that, and we can follow up with Judge Jackanett.
Question too, oh, sorry Derek, if you're still going.
You're all set.
Oh, pardon me. Yeah, no, this might be more of a question for the treasurer, but I don't see that anybody from his office is on tonight. I'd like to know more about the, the interest for the funds. If I recall correctly, it was two, round about two $13 million payments, so I imagine that interest is considerable. So anytime if somebody has the opportunity to send us a little more detail on what we could expect that amount to be, I'd find that really helpful, thank you.
So we got, we got our first $13 million last month, and it's invested at a rate of 0.45%, which is excellent, and so that will become unrestricted income for the county's general fund, and we will decide how to use that, just like any other unrestricted money for, you know, within... And so the treasurer is managing the funds and, and doing an excellent job getting that rate of return on investment, but ultimately it, it becomes part of the county's revenues. And we, we can, yeah, we can do a quick calculation of what that might be. We'll get the next $13 million next May.
That's excellent, great, thank you very much.
Kelly, you mentioned the court reopening schedule after the Fourth of July, is it July 5 or 6? Will we open the 5th, Monday the 5th?
The 6th.
That's what I thought, okay, thank you. All right. I think, anybody else with questions? Thank you.
So under new business tonight, we have just two items. Figure list for the second meeting in June, but for now, very important, the first one is 12B1, and that is resolution that we get every year from our Equalization Office, and that is to have the commissioners approve a resolution to levy Calhoun County summer and winter property taxes for 2021. Just wanna note, there are no increases in any of the millages to our taxpayers for the next coming year, and this has all been prepared by our Equalization Director and Deputy Tom Scott, who is here tonight to answer any questions.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the Calhoun County 2021 Summer and Winter Property Tax Resolutions as presented?
I'll move Betty.
Support Hatcher.
Betty and Hatcher, are there any questions? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Betty.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Frisby.
Yes.
Commissioner King.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, item 12B2 is a request for staffing change to the option that you approved back in December with our budget appropriations. So the request is coming from our Community Development Department. And we have, I believe Jen Bamba is here tonight, she oversees that department. And as we've been reporting, the, the Community Development Office in the county has been trying to hand our services to help out any townships that need zoning and planning administration assistance. We've got contracts currently with Penfield Township and Lee Township that the Board has approved. We've definitely been talking to other townships, and I mean, this is really a win-win if they need help because there's no longer staffing to do that, or really just it creates some consistency between townships and throughout the county when it comes to things like developers trying to look at different properties and having to sift through different rules for each township. So it's, some counties have a countywide zoning authority, we do not. So we're kind of, we've always been in like a coordinating facilitating role. We're not trying to take over countywide zoning, but we are trying to just offer that assistance. And to the extent that we get some of the larger townships to want that assistance, we need to make sure that we're in a position to do a good job. So Jen is requesting a new position called Zoning Coordinator. She can't do it all and be all in addition to overseeing all the other departments within community development. So we worked with HR to develop the job description, and the chair's budget will be covered through vacancies within that in the future. It will be an additional cost for that position that is, that will be offset, at least partially, by revenues from the contracts with the townships.
Great, can I have a motion to approve the staffing allocation request to Community Development, new zoning coordinator position as presented?
So move Tompkins. So move Tompkins.
Port Betty.
Tompkins and Betty. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Mitchner Hatcher.
Yes.
Mitchner Smith.
Yes.
Mitchner Frisbee.
Yes.
Mitchner King.
Yes.
Mitchner Miller.
Yes.
Mitchner Tompkins.
Yes.
Mitchner Betty.
Yes. Seven, yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, our next item is citizens' time, the same rules apply as during the first citizens' time. Please limit your time to three minutes, and no negative personal comments. Please mute your TV or computer when calling in, as a background sound will generate feedback. Please note that there is approximately a 30-second delay between the live meeting and the YouTube feed. Is there anyone who would like to address their commissioners? Have a hand up in the attendees. Kaylee?
Hi, thank you, folks, for having me on, I hope that you can hear me all right. Kaylee Winters, I live in Lakeview Battle Creek area, and I just wanted to address that it is Pride Month. Happy Pride Month to anybody here who is queer or is queer, family or friends. As an openly bisexual woman in this county, it has come to my attention that there is no LGBTQ plus protections that are specifically countywide here. I know that Commissioner Jake Smith has put on the EOC docket several times now that there should be LGBTQ plus protections here in the county, and I'm here to hopefully get that addressed. I, I know it's not part of your schedule today, but hopefully that we can get that on your schedule soon. Although with the Elliott Larson Act, which is unfortunately not been completely pushed through, there are still citizens in the United States that are open to discrimination just based on their gender identity or their sexual orientation. And I believe that it is the duty of Calhoun County to protect its citizens and to make sure that they are not discriminated, discriminated against, excuse me, in housing or job opportunities. So the next schedule that you have, I really hope to see that on your agenda. And if there are any open comments from any of the commissioners on why they do not support this, I would love to hear that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Sir, anybody else who would like to address their commissioners? Anybody else in the queue, Austin, or Patrick? Okay, we'll move along. Commissioner time, any commissioners have anything to share tonight? All right, claims payable, can I have a motion to approve the Calhoun County Claims Payable from May 14th, 2021 through May 27th, 2021? The amount of $2,468,331.36 as presented.
I'll move Betty.
Support.
Support Hatcher.
Betty and Smith, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the role.
Mitchner Smith.
Yes.
Mitchner Frisbee.
Yes.
Mitchner King.
Yes.
Mitchner Miller.
Yes.
Mitchner Tompkins.
Yes.
Mitchner Betty. Mitchner Hatcher.
Yes.
That's seven, yeah.
Who carries? Are there any announcements tonight?
I got something, Steve.
Go ahead.
This weekend, we're doing, I announced the first thing, we're doing a drive-through fair food event at the fairgrounds. It's from Friday from 11:00 to 8:00, Saturday from 11:00 to 8:00, and Sunday 11:00 to 6:00. So can we get your fair food fix this weekend?
Thank you. Anybody else? Just one announcement, for me, the Field of Flight, the airshow and balloon festival in Battle Creek is indeed on June 30th through July 4th. I would expect there's probably gonna be some pretty big crowds out there, so you can look it up at bcballoons.com. See you out there, I know I'll be out there quite a bit. All right. Anybody else? If not, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Guys, have a great evening.
You.
I'm gonna go take some Claritin.
Uh-oh, lots of, lots of pollen.